And before we get started, I would like to recognize our sponsors. The first, the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce's mission is to make the city of Dallas the best place it can be to live, work, build a business, and raise a family. The Chamber is the influential advocate for business growth and a thriving community. In addition to taking advocacy positions on key issues facing our community, the North Dallas Chamber also seeks to drive voter engagement and awareness by hosting candidate forums just like these. And this is part of our Civics for Business series sponsored by Encore and Iberia Bank. The Dallas Breakfast Group's mission is to increase participation by Dallas-area business executives and civic leaders in local elections and affairs. The Dallas Breakfast Group is the only business-focused organization in Dallas to host forums for members and candidates running for all Dallas elected positions. So, thank you to Representatives Margaret Kelleher and Margaret Hughes for joining us today. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization who does not endorse any political party or candidate, but encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding on major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League serves Dallas County along with sister leagues in Irving and Richardson, and it's represented today by Chelsea Keller, Elizabeth Wally, and Diane Tassian. The Friends of the Dallas Public Library works to promote the Dallas Public Library and its 30 branches as vibrant learning institutions in our community and support its mission to achieve excellence in the delivery of resources, services, and information for the Dallas community. Friends is represented by Mary Wolansky and Ken Benson. And finally, Faith Commons promotes public discourse rooted in the common values of many faiths. Its programs encourage and inspire people of all faiths and to participate in public life with mutual respect, hospitality, and generosity. Faith Commons is represented today by Nancy Casten. A little bit of information on District 11, I'm sure as all these candidates know well. It is a 16-square-mile district located in the heart of North Dallas. It encompasses parts of Preston Hollow, Lake Forest, Churchill, Northwood, Valley View, and many other parts in far north Dallas. It is primarily residential, but has significant commercial properties with the Galleria Mall and Office Towers and future Midtown and Park Heritage projects on or near the Old Valley View Mall sites. Economically, District 11 is one of the highest-performing districts in the city with 13.43 jobs per acre compared to 5.28 citywide and a property tax base of almost 1.2 million per acre compared with 548,000 citywide. I promise there will not be a quiz on all of those statistics at the end. But just now onto a little housekeeping and the rules of the forum. We are using ballot order, so Ms. Schultz will go first, then Ms. Yamaru, Mr. Warnock, and Ms. Evans will be the sequence. Don't worry, I'll keep track of all of that. Ms. Schultz, you will make the first opening statement, then Ms. Yamaru, and so forth. Then Ms. Yamaru will respond to question number one first, then Mr. Warnock, and so on. So, I'll prompt you each of the way, so you don't have to remember. Following each candidate has two minutes for an opening statement. Following those, we will have a series of moderator and audience questions, and each candidate has one minute to respond. Mr. Kittner will be our dignified timekeeper, so you'll hear his alarm go off at that one-minute mark. Audience members, if you have a question, please post it in the Q and A for any question to be considered. It must be asked to all candidates. And before we begin, I'd like to give a special shout-out to Councilmember Lee Kleidman, who I see is on this call. Thank you for your eight years of service, and we wish you well. We will miss you here in North Dallas, so don't be a stranger. So, first, we'll begin with Ms. Schultz and your opening statement.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce and the many sponsors of today's forum. Your hard work to shed light on the city council races is important and will help many people to make their decision. By now, you may have had one of us knock on your door at home, listened to other presentations, read the Dallas Morning News comments and endorsement, and received mailings. I would like to tell you a story, my story. When I was 15-years-old, an assistant city manager, Levi Davis, came to speak to my high school at Skyline. He talked about the possibilities of city government, the relationship with people who work for the city you have with each of us, and the challenges we face for the future. I was so inspired, I worked as an intern for Mayor Bob Folsom and City Manager George Schrader. I received a master's degree in urban studies, all because one person talked about possibility. As time passed, keeping an eye on city issues and projects, I raised my four children, two foster kids, ran two businesses, served on countless boards, and then learned about an opening on the Dallas City Plan Commission. In 2014, I became the person who thought about possibilities and engagement with the city. I worked directly with neighborhoods and developing cases such as Preston Hollow Village. I helped Costco make sure they added a lot of landscaping. I brokered deals between schools and neighborhoods. All the while, my desire to serve deepened, and my belief in the bright future of this city grew. I want to partner with our businesses, residents, nonprofits, and city administration to reach the potential everyone who lives here deserves. I will bring council together in new ways, and will work closely with everyone interested to bring a positive approach to leadership. To sum it up, I have the passion, the education, and the experience to be a highly successful council member for District 11 and the city we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Yamaru, it's your turn.
Yes, thank you so much for having us here today. I say this before every forum, I have two very loud dogs. I'm surprised they haven't barked during another forum before, but this might be it. This might be the first time. So, I want to preface that. I also have a cough that will not go away, so if my voice sounds odd, I apologize. But yes, thank you so much for having us and for all the partners here today raising awareness about the city council race. I really appreciate you. My name is Hosana Yamaru. I'm an organizer. I'm a District 11 neighbor, and I am so excited to have the opportunity to hear from everyone here today and to take your questions and to answer your questions. I'm running because I love Dallas. I moved here from, my family and I moved here from Abi Salwa, Ethiopia when I was about 11-years-old. And we grew up really relying on our city services, anything from our Dart buses to our libraries, to our city services that helped us pay utility bills. And I think it's really important to make sure that these city services are funded and available and accessible to Dallasites across our city. And I think it's important that we have city council members that are really focused on not only the bread and butter of our city, our infrastructure needs, our housing and homelessness needs, public safety, but also ensuring that we have a city that functions for everyone, to have working people in the city of Dallas protected, to have housing for everyone, to ensure that the services that we rely on day in and day out are prioritized and that working people have a voice in the way that our city functions and how resources are allocated. So, I'm very much looking forward to talking to you all and excited to have the opportunity to share a little bit about myself.
Thank you, Ms. Yamaru. Now, on to Mr. Warnock.
Okay, hello. Thank you for holding this NDCC forum. I think it's incredible, and I appreciate all the partners who are sponsoring this. I want to give you a little bit of background if you don't know me already. I grew up in Dallas. I went to Akiba Academy, went to St. Mark's School of Texas, where I was, served as student council president. I went to the University of Texas and also the Muscovski and Gattichuski Institute in Moscow. I also came back here to study at SMU Law School as well as at the Tel Aviv School of Law. After law school, I worked in several capacities all over the world and all over America. I helped in Russia with Ambassador Strauss promoting freedom and democracy in 91, 92, and fighting for human rights at a time when communism was, well, they were democratizing over there, and we were hopefully making a difference. In Israel, I worked with the Ministry of Justice, in addition to working with law firms focusing on tech startups in the startup nation. But at the Ministry of Justice, my focus was actually on absorbing people from all over the world, from Ethiopia to Russia, absorbing them into a new culture and actually teaching them how to buy into the new culture and be together and be united, navigating housing issues. There are so many issues, but worked a lot on that. In America, I came back here, I worked in a lot of different, as in-house counsel and as a managing member of a lot of startups, from pharmaceutical companies to SEC, FTC-regulated companies, real estate, construction, and so on, even the entertainment industry. Thirteen years ago, I moved back here to settle down because this was the greatest city that I'd grown up in. I knew this was the place I wanted to get married, raise children, and start my life and raise a family in the same wonderful, secure place that I had the opportunity to be raised in. And I'm glad to be back, but there's a lot to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. All right, we'll round out opening statements with Ms. Evans.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Candy Evans. I'm a journalist. I'm a small-business owner, and I live on Rick Circle in Hillcrest Estates here in beautiful District 11. And thank you for doing this forum. Thank you so much. This is the most important city council election in our lifetime. Do we accept lower standards of living for our city? Or do we fight to bring back a city that most of us knew when we moved here or when we grew up here? A place where you could actually leave your door unlocked and nothing would happen? Now, when you lock your door, you get robbed, even when you lock it. We have porch pirates, panhandlers, and drag racers. One of the highest crime rates in the nation now is in Dallas. And Dallas actually had more property crimes in 2021 than my hometown of Chicago, which I left 41-years ago. I do not believe, as two of my opponents do, that there is a perception of more crime in District 11. There is more crime. Eight murders last year. I refuse to accept lower standards for this city and for this district. We need a change from the regime of the last eight years that has brought us to this place. Homeless, it's estimated to be 4,500 now. It was 2,600 eight-years ago. So, my theme for today is called "Give Change a Chance." I ask you, why in the world would you vote for someone who was endorsed by the person who brought us here? Who has all this experience but has accomplished so little? To be on the Dallas City Council, you don't need an apprenticeship of having been on the City Plan Commission. In fact, Lee replaced Janie with a journalist. You don't need to have been on the park board. You need to have a track record in getting stuff done, in business, in needing and knowing when to be penny-wise and pound-foolish. You have to know that sometimes you invest dollars in a project like Midtown for sewers over Costco to reap a business profit. You don't defund the police when the crime rate is up and people are getting murdered down the street from you. You don't spend money for yet another study to tell you you hired the wrong police chief. You don't put Band-Aids on issues. Four-years ago, I tried to open the door. This year, I'm coming in and joining the team, and I am a team player. Thank you.
Thank you, Seven. All right, now we'll begin with our questions. First question, one of the main responsibilities of the Dallas City Council is approving the city's budgets. With a revenue shortfall expected due to COVID-19 and continuing residual impacts from the October 2019 tornado and, of course, recent snowstorm, how will you approach what is expected to be a very difficult budget process? We will begin with Ms. Yamaru.
Yes, thank you so much. So, I think that we're actually not going to see too bad of a budget shortfall this cycle. And I think that it's really important that we know that Dallas has never really had a money problem. We've always had a priority problem. So, I think it's important that in this next budget cycle that we're prioritizing the things that for the past year and a half or two years since COVID started that we've been really focused on. We should be prioritizing the needs of working people, like I mentioned earlier. We're about to see a large infusion of federal dollars through the Biden administration that's going to come in for COVID relief, and that gives us a really great opportunity to be investing into our small-business owners. We have a great opportunity to be investing into our renters. 60% of our city is registered, and they're in need of aid right now, into our homeowners who are looking for mortgage loans. We should be investing into ensuring that people have access to the things that make them successful, good, affordable housing, into transportation. And above all else, we need to make sure that we're working well together with the rest of the council, with the city manager, and ensuring that people in the city of Dallas actually have a say in how the city budget is built. I don't think that having one or two sessions and then making sure that we have a 12-hour marathon where people can make comments in the beginning, I don't think that's very democratic. It's not very good for the health of our city, and people don't feel like they have ownership over the city budget. So, I think we need to have a more participatory budgeting process put in place before they make the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yamaru. Mr. Warnock, you're up.
Okay, let's do it. Minute countdown now. Budget, very important. There's something that I think that I'm uniquely qualified for. And I haven't worked for philanthropies, although I've given. There's a certain mindset that people have, for instance, campaigners, that the money keeps on coming. And that's not something that's actually true in a business. There's an actual budget. Ten-years ago, under Mayor Leppard and councilmen like Ron Natinsky, who were fiscally conservative, who were on top of the budget, on top of a lot of things actually, added 200 cops to our police force every year. And we were one of the safest cities in the country then. That's when I got married and decided to raise the children. $2-billion budget. Ten-years later, though, it's a $4-billion budget. There's a lot of waste in there. We have 1,000 less cops. Do you feel safer? That's my question to everyone. And I think we can all agree we don't, and that has to be our first priority, public safety. And that's why the Dallas Police Association has endorsed me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. Ms. Evans?
Hi. Public safety, oh, first of all, let me tell you, fewer shiny objects. Public safety, more police, neighborhood policing, better police training, and psychological care for our police. A comprehensive plan to get the homeless off the streets and in treatment, an ordinance against panhandling, and ethics re-hall, more cooperation and productivity out of Dallas County, clean and solid streets, alleys, and sidewalks. Also, I'd like an emergency preparedness system that'll take us through the next pandemic. I believe that we can do this without raising taxes. I do, I agree with Hosana. I think that there is going to be enough money because our property values are up, which reminds me that we might want to even look at a tax cut because property values go up and we pay more money, even though, you know, the rate stays the same. So, I think we're going to have plenty of money. I think we have to just cut the fat and really, really trim the system down, and we can achieve all of these things.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
Here are the facts. The city is required to pass a two-year balanced budget, so when there are revenue shortfalls, there must be cuts. The budget is currently $3.8 billion. Councilman Kleidman arranged for his commissioners to get a briefing on the budget. And when I decided to run, I asked for an update to better understand its complexity. This year, the council made $64 million in cuts based on projected decreases in revenue. Those cuts will continue into 2022 unless property values, especially commercial ones, change. One of those cuts, for example, was no pay raises for city employees for two years. In July, the city will have the information to see if more cuts are needed. The 377 million from the CARES Act and perhaps more from the American Rescue Plan will allow the people to replace, excuse me, the city, to replace lost revenue and hopefully avoid other cuts. I believe that growing our commercial tax base is a key to fund our budget and lessen the burden on homeowners along with partnering with the business community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Most of you mentioned this. This is question number two, so it's a good segue. The largest portion of the city's budget is dedicated to public safety. What do you think is the most effective and fiscally responsible strategy to improve public safety for residents of District 11? And do you think public safety is funded at the correct level? Or would you seek to either increase or decrease the funding allocated to public safety? Mr. Warnock, we'll begin with you.
First of all, from the very beginning of the campaign, when I started, when I filed, my number-one priority was public safety. So, whereas some candidates have kind of joined in on that as being an issue, this has been my number-one issue since day one. That is why the Dallas Police Association has endorsed me. I'm the only candidate in District 11 they've endorsed. And the reason for that is they trust me. They know that I will increase funding, not decrease funding. I'll never vote to defund the police like 11 out of our 14 council people did this past year. I'll always ensure that our first responders, law enforcement, firefighters, always have the necessary resources to make Dallas safe and strong again. As I mentioned, under Mayor Leppard, we added 200 cops every year, and every year, the crime rate went down. I would plan to do the same thing and have the same results. That's why Mayor Leppard has endorsed me and Honorable Ron Natinsky has endorsed me as well. Let's make Dallas safe and strong again.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. Ms. Evans?
Hi, yes, I would look to put more money into public safety because we do need to bring up, we're down, I believe, 500 to 1,000 police. It's very hard to recruit. I would look to ways to take our police academy and make that sort of a little piggy bank where we could actually make it profitable by, you know, training other police and charging them for it. Dallas has a crime problem, but we also have to consider that it's not just Dallas alone creating that. Or, you know, it's the county, and we have to work with others and partner with the county to get, you know, fewer people out on bonds and, you know, to maybe, you know, change the, some of the, the way the judges are letting these criminals out. I think that we do have to focus on getting more police, and that may be the first focus of anything we do with the budget there. And then the increased training, and years ago, there was a program for the police where they would have a psychologist or a social worker on staff where they could go and talk. And I think that if we kind of do some of those services, it'll help.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
Let me say unequivocally, I do not support any type of reductions to our public safety budget. The North Central Station, which covers Districts 11, 12, and some of 13, has the lowest crime rates in Dallas. And 80% of crime in District 11 is crime against property due to opportunity. But nonetheless, crime is up across the city, and we must support Chief Garcia's plan, which will be presented later this year. So far, his interest in community policing, mental health support, and other initiatives show real promise for successful leadership. But the first step is to make sure we can hire all the officers we need. The challenge is making sure the rank-and-file know they have a secure pension. The city is paying millions into the plan as part of the annual budget, but we must find a way to secure the pension for the future. As endorsed by the firefighters, we must have the stations and equipment they need. Acting on fear will not strengthen our city. We must work hard together with our first responders to meet their needs and work with neighborhoods to build relationships based on trust.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Yamaru?
You know, public safety has been the focus of campaigns for the past 20, 30-years, and that's because that is one of the things that cities have to focus on in what they have to do. But I think it's really important that we are investing into what causes violence and crime in our cities instead of just slapping a Band-Aid on the issue. DPD tells us year after year that they are overburdened, that they are stretched too thin. And I think that we have a responsibility as a city to ensure that we are investing into crime reduction and crime prevention instead of just crime response. And that includes funding things like mental health resources. That includes funding things like housing and homeless services. That includes funding things like addiction services so that we can actually stop crime before it happens. That includes things like good lighting in our neighborhoods. Policing is not always the answer to every systemic problem. Police know this. We know this. Our neighborhoods are overburdened. Our police are overburdened. Because it scores political points to say that we're going to do this and we're going to do that. But what we actually need to do is invest into the root causes of violence and crime.
Thank you, Ms. Yamaru. That's a good segue to our third question. You mentioned homelessness and housing security continue to be a challenge for our city, particularly in District 11, along Central Expressway and unfortunately, some of our trails. Often, instead of a comprehensive solution, the strategy seems to be to just relocate homeless encampments. What is your strategy to resolve the city's challenges here? We will start with Ms. Evans.
Oh, hello. Okay, I'm unmuted. Yes, we need substance abuse and mental health care programs yesterday. Number one, we make panhandling illegal. In North Dallas, panhandlers can make about $700 a day, I'm told, in cash. They're not getting rich, but it'd be preferable to have them working at real jobs. We educate the district not to give those without a home money. People don't want or accept food. They ask for money. We work with the many partners, many, many partners, and public and private, and we get them services required to, you know, to address this. They are staggering. A lot of this is based on the fact that we have a drug culture out there that we haven't really addressed at the federal level at all. And now we're seeing the results of this. I want to see a clean, safe roof over their heads, and when the time is right, and their stable assistance in purchasing a home. And I think we need the comprehensive plan that involves every single aspect of the city from public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
Let me begin by saying the answer to homelessness is housing. Last summer, before the campaign began, I spent a lot of time cleaning up after the panhandlers. After meeting with several of the service providers and reading the city's plan, I learned that there are about 37 homeless people in the city of Dallas, of which 1,150 are unsheltered. We must provide more opportunities, such as the new District 11 St. Jude Project, which will offer 190 permanent supportive homes with all the necessary support, such as mental health, physical health, and jobs. Experts in the field understand the wide variety of needs and the many solutions. Our job on the council is to help the professionals and leverage our own relationships to provide support for those doing the heavy lifting, whether that be acquiring properties like St. Jude's or working with businesses to support projects like the Salvation Army's new complex on Stemmons Freeway. Regarding panhandling, I do not think we can police our way out of this challenge. The solution is in our hands. We must stop giving money to panhandlers and offer support for those that are without homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Yamaru?
I agree with Janie. I don't think that we can police our way out of panhandling or homelessness. I don't think that it makes sense to continue to chase homeless communities from under one bridge into another bridge, from under one district into another district. What we need to do is house people as fast as we can and as much as we can, especially now as we are in a public, we're still in a public health crisis. COVID-19 is still happening. And our unhoused individuals are more at risk of catching COVID and spreading COVID. So, it's important that we're housing people, providing permanent supportive housing and transition housing, and realizing that we need to put funding behind these things because paying lip service to it doesn't really do anything. I think it's also important beyond this to understand that there is a bigger issue here of affordability in our city. And we need to ensure that we are no longer being the, one of the most racially and economically segregated cities in the entire country. We need to build affordability into North Dallas so that people have a space to live next to their jobs and can have good-paying jobs, work with our partners to ensure that we're bringing permanent supportive housing into District 11 and not just in South and West South.
Thank you, Ms. Yamaru. And finally, Mr. Warnock.
Homeless, this is a major issue, one of the top issues that I have been addressing since day one of my campaign. I think I'm the only candidate, I know I'm the only candidate that's actually endorsed by someone who's actually created homeless solutions, actual solutions. I consult with him all the time. His name is Ron Hall, and you may know him from the New York Times Bestseller, Same Kind of Different as Me. When I speak to him, I ask him, you know, you've raised hundreds of millions of dollars for, because Houston has reached out to you. Atlanta has reached out to you. Other cities have reached out to you. Has Dallas reached out to you? And he told me, no. I said, but you live here, right here in District 11, and no one ever talks to you. And he has some great ideas because it's based on things that work. When I was putting up a sign on Preston Forest, a gentleman at 2:30 in the morning came walking down the street. First thing Ron Hall told me was ask someone their name. And I asked him, and he said, "My name's Vincent. Nice to meet you, Mr. Barry Warnock." Saw my sign, and that's the start of everything. But I can get to more solutions, I guess, in my closing. I'm sorry, ran out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. All right, we'll move to a different topic, illegal street racing. It was mentioned in some of the opening statements, and it, as you know, has been an ongoing issue for this district and the North Dallas area as a whole. Various groups, including the Chamber, have worked with our state representatives on implementing harsh penalties for this illegal activity. What additional strategies would you recommend be implemented to curtail these dangerous activities? We'll begin with Ms. Schultz.
Thank you very much. I think that you and the Chamber, you're right on because what we have to do is create a city-wide response to this challenge. We have to work with the police, and I know that the police are doing research from other cities and what's working there, Los Angeles. I know they're putting a task force together, and our job on the council is to support those efforts and then to communicate very, very carefully and clearly with our residents, the residents in our districts, to let them know what's going on and what their job is in policing. It's a game of whack-a-mole at this point, and so really, understanding the cause and why it's suddenly such a huge scourge in our city is the key. And so, it'll be a matter of partnering with the businesses and with all of our first responders and our neighborhoods on this solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Yamaru?
You know, a lot of people that I've talked to about this, especially folks who've lived in the city for a long time and who did not used to live in North Dallas and you still live in South Dallas, have said that we've had street racing for a very long time because this is the '70s. It's just been moving up and up and up into North Dallas, and now we see it as the big issue that it is. And like Janie said, it's a whack-a-mole issue at this point, but it doesn't have to be that way. I think that we need to be focusing on finding ways to really invest into infrastructure at this time to use traffic calling. use traffic calming measures to make it nearly impossible for people to actually use our streets to do donuts, to, to be street racing. Um, and I think that's a great opportunity that we should be going forward with. I don't actually support expanding civil asset forfeiture in the sense, I think that it's shown, um, to be dangerous in, in the past um, in the way that it's been used. So that's not something that I support and I would advocate for it to not be a thing. Um, but I do think we have a great opportunity here to, to expand into infrastructure, put traffic calming measures in and make sure that the neighborhoods um, and the businesses in this area have a.
Thank you, Ms. Yammaru. Uh, Mr. Wernick.
Street takeovers, well, a lot of street, well, first of all, street takeovers and homelessness. I just want to give one, um, one point on homelessness and then we'll move on. And that is that, uh, three years ago, we started spending $12 million a year on homelessness and they turned out to be temporary fixes and just Band-Aids. 3,000 homelessness three years ago, 4,500 today. It's gone up 50%. That's why we need to talk to people that actually have solutions. As far as street takeovers, this is a very important issue and it's tied into a lot of things. Number one, it's, while the, while the public sentiment due to these false narratives have grown against our police department and, um, and created a just low morale among our first responders. Um, street takeovers does the same thing. It shows, it's a, it's a basically, can't say it with a nice word, but it's that to the police and to us as citizens who live here, to you. Um, this is something that has to be done with a cyber crimes unit that we need to have that is proactive, not reactive. That also stands for where we're number one in the, where we're number one in that is human trafficking. And it is a hundred million dollar a year industry in Dallas at least. And we can address both of those if we just had a cyber crimes unit and, um, and we could get started right away on that.
Thank you, Mr. Wernick and Ms. Evans.
Hey, um, shock and awe, two words. I've been researching this and writing about it, you know, it's very interesting. It, um, it supersedes all economic classes, all races. A lot of cities are having this problem now, kind of is maybe, and maybe it's the boomer problem, I don't know. But we need to enact, um, any, uh, first of all, um, let me give kudos to our chief of police, our new chief of police. I think he's getting this under control. He's having weekly updates. Um, we need to enact any constitutional additional penalties and coordinate again with the district attorney's office to create a zero tolerance for this conduct with full jail sentences, auto impounding, and no plea bargains as a shock to these scot-free. Now, I will say that the bill that's being passed by our own John Turner is a huge step in the right direction. And I think that if we all work together, and this is where being an effective communicative city councilman or woman can actually do the best job because we could have meetings about this, communicate about this and say, let's stop it.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. All right, question number five. District 11 has some exciting new large-scale mixed-use projects, particularly around the Old Valley View Mall site. Most of the development has been private with the city adding in match funding recently towards the park project. It's now being re-branded and re-envisioned as the International District. But the massive project has had a lot of stops and starts. So how would you help get it moving and bring it to fruition? We will start with Ms. Yammaru. Hozan, I believe you are muted. Try again. There we go. No. No, we can't hear you. Okay, here, we'll let, we'll let, uh, Mr. Wernick go and we'll come back to you. Is that okay?
So another top issue of mine has been Valley View Midtown. I, I grew up going to, uh, you know, Hot Topic and Spencer's and, you know, this is, this is just an eyesore. And I want to focus on that and, and focus on different priorities, different philosophies of, of moving, uh, our city forward. We really need to look at the dog wagging the tail approach as opposed to the tail wagging the dog. There are a lot of wonderful pet projects that we can do, put, put forward in Dallas. But with Valley View and Midtown, I think the number one thing, and Candy brought it up earlier. You know, Costco was already coming here and what did we do? We spent, uh, several million dollars as a sort of incentive to bring them here, but they were, they were already coming here. In the meantime, we figured a government building that we had to, that we paid probably double the price to put in Brinker's Place instead of keeping Brinker here and possibly incentivizing Brinker to stay in Midtown. Look, this whole idea of, it's sort of the North Richland Hills concept that our current leadership had. And that is, you take, um, North Richland Hills Mall and what they did was they knocked it down. What do we get for a government center? We get no tax revenue. And that's the problem. And it became a desert. Same thing is happening here. We need new leadership, people with uh, an eye to the future. And that's why the Real Estate Council endorsed me because they selected a candidate with a.
Ms. Uh.
Sorry, my, my timer hasn't gone off yet. I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Hi. Oh, yes, thank you. Um, Midtown. 20 billion potential value, basically the same as downtown Dallas. Now, I'm going to admit, it's, it was a complicated project. There's, there were lots of owners, there was lots of fighting. But a council man or woman, woman, with better communication and negotiating skills and real estate knowledge could really have gotten this thing moved along. It should have been a top priority, getting the permits accelerated, the infrastructure accelerated, not fighting, not being an obstructionist. Um, I think that going forward, we can move that way. I personally, we, I'm going to become an expert in sewers. That is my next research project because the thing that's held this up so much is the lack of sewers that they didn't put in because you need new sewer lines to get all this extra, you know, density in there. So, uh, yes, that is my next research, Sewers 101. But I think that, that, uh, having a councilman who will make this their top priority and bring in really exciting new businesses to that area will absolutely get Midtown moving.
Evans, uh, Ms. Schultz.
Valley View is complex and cannot be compared to any other project in the region because there are over 400 property owners and 450 acres involved. Many see the rubble of the mall which came down less than 18 months ago. Others see the new buildings going up on the west side of Monfort. The 2013 plan, which the North Dallas Chamber spearheaded, is slowly taking shape. The lawsuits between the mall owners are finally settled and the Park Heritage Project will begin by the end of this year. On behalf of the property owners, I worked on several zoning changes since 2014. The city's hired an expert strategic planner to help the adopted plan move forward. And I continue to serve on that team, including as the DISD liaison for the first pre-K to 12 international steam academy. Many think the mall is the entire project, but it extends to the Galleria and even as a cardout for the Redbird Mall. This is the biggest opportunity for Dallas, truly. As a key developer said, it is the corner of Maine and Maine. It is the backstop to the northern suburbs. This district must have someone who understands the complexity and opportunity of this multi-billion dollar endeavor and can work with everyone at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. And Ms. Yammaru. Thank you for logging back in.
I apologize. Um, was the question about Valley View?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It's about, uh, the, the mixed-use site, the Midtown and Park Heritage sites, and how will you get it going?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, this is one of, one of those hot button issues that, um, we hear a lot on the doors. And I think that, um, it is an eyesore. It is something that, that's been sitting there for a long time. But we have a really great opportunity to have something in District 11 that's going to be an economic driver. Um, and I'm very excited to see it come to place, um, and to have a park in there and to have, um, mixed-use development in that sense as well. So I think right now it's really important that we're driving more for, um, more affordability in that, in, in the development to make sure that the neighborhoods around the development are also well taken care of and we're not displacing people as this development is going up. Um, and I think it's important more than anything to be a good communicator because there are, I believe somewhere around 500 people that are involved with this development. And it's important that you have someone who can organize their way. Um, and to make sure that they can work well with everyone that is involved with that to make sure that it goes on forward and becomes the big economic driver that it can be. Um, but I think we're all excited to see, we're all excited to see Midtown go up. Um, and I, I know that the neighbors are, um, frustrated, but, but glad that it's coming to an end.
Thank you, Ms. Yammaru. All right, moving on to the next question. Dallas continues to be a vibrant economic city with major companies like Uber and Jacobs choosing to relocate here. While we have a great story, proactive economic development for the city of Dallas sometimes gets overlooked in favor of what is best for North Texas as a region. What specific policies would you recommend be implemented to generate proactive economic development for our city? Oh, sorry, begin with Mr. Wernick.
All right, two in a row. There we go. Um, so economic, uh, well, first of all, it's, it's the most valuable piece of real estate in North Texas. And that's the former Valley View, uh, Midtown, Dallas Midtown Park Heritage Area. 450 acres to, to believe that, that each district, what happens in one district doesn't affect another district or even our region as a whole, that's a misnomer. I know we have separate districts here, but, you know, that's why my overall theme is, what's good is, is let's unite for Dallas, not for District 11. And so that's our biggest opportunity. That's really our hidden gem here. And I say hidden because, yeah, all we see is dust, the AMC theater. But the city needs to do what we're doing down in Redbird. And that is helping the developer doing this, what the city is supposed to do, public infrastructure. Um, fiscally conservative, as fiscally conservative as possible. But if we get that economic engine running, then we get safer neighborhoods. We get jobs. You have more jobs, safer neighborhoods. It all goes back to public safety, to the whole region, because we'll have people coming here from, from all over. And as Candy mentioned, potentially 20 billion, this, this is worth, um, similar to downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Wernick. Ms. Evans.
Great question. It's a real estate question. The biggest problem that real agents tell me is that people are coming here, they're looking for homes, they want to live in Dallas. But they start saying, hmm, what's the crime rate around here? And guess what they do? They turn around and they start looking up north in the suburban, even in Richardson, just like right across the street just because of the perception, the perception of safety. That's why we need to have the perception made real. We need public safety schools. That used to be something that people would also go north for, but actually our schools are getting really good. And so I don't think that's as much of a problem as it used to be. Affordable housing, which we actually have in Dallas, if you look in the right places. But once again, the safety needs to come into that. You know, you can move into a certain pocket that's changing and you can have safety there. Um, and then the biggest problem is getting, if we get rid of the corruption in our city government, we will be well on a road to bringing all those wonderful companies here. And I really want them to come, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. I think if I understand your question, you're asking for how the city itself can build its revenue as a city. And, and I think the answer is twofold. One is as we grow our commercial tax race, tax, excuse me, tax base, as was referenced by my opponents, for sure. The other piece is really examining the, uh, places where we're leaving money on the table, like the building, uh, permits, the permits department needs to be completely revamped. And we need to do that in partnership with the business community to understand the millions of dollars that we're leaving on the table. Additionally, at the 8.25, uh, sales tax, only 1% goes to the city. And so we need to make sure that we're really maximizing buy local, uh, on that as well so that we do grow that number and get our 1%. And I think finally, the last piece that we need to really get excited about are, um, individual. We have a lot of shopping centers that can be reimagined and that we can work with developers on as well. Um, so I'm excited about those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. And Ms. Yammaru.
Um, I think the thing that I, I want to focus on here is also workforce development. Because I think it's really important that if we want to attract, um, jobs to, to our area and not only losing them out to, to the suburbs or to Plano or to whatever it is, um, that we need to have a workforce that is ready to go. And on top of that, I think we also need to make sure on the other side of that, that when these jobs come here, when these corporations like Uber come here and they say that they're going to create jobs in the city of Dallas, that they're not just bringing all these workers from out of state that now have all these jobs that we've created, right? It's really important that they're hiring people from the city of Dallas, that they're paying them a living wage um, so that we can grow the, the tax base that already exists here. Um, but I think our schools, like Ms. Evans mentioned, is really, really important because we need to ensure that we're partnering with RISD and DISD here in District 11 to make sure that kids have um, the knowledge that they need to be good workers in the future. Um, but really, really important, I think, is to also partner with our community colleges and our universities in the area to have people that are ready to be placed into these, into these programs, into these jobs as our city grows. And that is the best place that we can grow Dallas as a whole.
Thank you, Ms. Yammaru. All right, on staying on the topic of economic development, the largest portion of our tax base, approximately 85%, is north of the Trinity River. If elected, what would you do to reduce this economic gap between the northern and southern sectors? We'll begin with Ms. Evans.
Okay, I want to go back to one thing because Janie hit the nail on the head here with the building permits department. You know that I call it theater of the absurd. The city doesn't even have a permanent head building official. The current one is interim and has been interim for a year. So that is a huge problem with businesses trying to get stuff done here. They leave and they go to outside, uh, um, suburban areas because they can get it done faster. Okay, how are we going to help South Dallas? Well, we are starting with Redbird Mall. We need to have more businesses and more jobs in South Dallas. Um, and that will lift the tide up. It'll lift up the tide of housing. It'll lift up the, the tide of crime as we attack crime and we get our public safety checked. Um, one of the things that I'd love to see, and I know it's a big problem, is, um, we need more grocery stores down there. I mean, people in South Dallas have to drive so far to go to a grocery store and we've thrown so much money at this. One of my ideas, um, I used to go to a co-op when I was in graduate school. You know, I was putting myself through school. I was poor, so I'd run down to Harlem and go to a co-op. And, um, food co-ops, I'd like to see the starters in food co-ops because I'm a big believer in healthy eating. And I would love to see that happen. I think that's one way, healthy eating, healthy houses.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, but one of the things that I really want to do is understand, you know, we have this common language around north-south divide. And there's lots of differences in between all of our districts and all parts of town. In this case, in the tax base, we have to work really, really closely with our Southern Dallas council people to understand and support the initiatives that they want to take to grow theirs, to grow their tax base. Because that's really the answer to this whole thing, is growing the pie. It's not splitting it more differently, it's growing the whole thing so that everybody can be at the, the kind of numbers that North Dallas is. Um, so that is how I would do it. I would work also, of course, with our chambers, with our Economic Development Department. With Visit Dallas, there are so many opportunities that are undiscovered throughout the city that we can use as revenue streams in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Yammaru.
Um, yeah, I think it's important to, to know that, um, South Dallas knows what South Dallas needs. West Dallas knows what West Dallas needs. And it's really important to me that those council members are also taking, um, the, the lead on how we're going to be developing South Dallas and West Dallas. And we're doing it in a way that invests into the communities that are already there and making sure that we're not displacing additional communities as we grow and develop, um, south of, south of I-30. We're also, something that we talk about a lot is, is property tax relief. But there's really no way of doing this unless we grow the pie, just like Janie mentioned, right? If we, we ensure that everyone across our city has equitable distribution of, of the burden, um, then we would have property tax reduction in the long run. So this is a very long-term plan. Uh, but it needs to make sure that the stakeholders that are in those communities are the people that are being consulted in the way that their neighborhood is growing and the way that their communities are growing. Incentivizing things like healthy food, incentivizing things like, uh, mindful development instead of just luxury development that pushes out neighbors is also a very important plan of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yammaru. And Mr. Wernick.
Um, I would, I would definitely, uh, look at, um, well, number one, I'll always represent my constituents. And I think a lot of time, a lot of people, um, when I'm knocking on the doors are telling me that they feel like they haven't been listened to and that, and that they're not being represented. But what I explain to them is, yes, we can represent our constituents and still represent the city as a whole. Now, I'm an attorney mediator. That's what I do. I think City Hall needs what, what Hozan was actually talking about and listening to others. Because I don't have the same experience as someone who's living in District 2 and District 9. That's a different experience than someone living in District 13. And that's just the way it is. But what I've done and what my experience has shown me is that if you get the media and the morning news and everyone else out of the room for a bit, then we can have an honest discussion. We can find out what it is that'll make Dallas as a whole united. And you can get people coming to the table. If you can unite people with a common goal, you can get people to, to agree on, if you, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Wernick. Okay, this is our last question, then we'll go to a lightning round. Parks, Trails, Libraries, and Cultural Affairs are what Councilmember Kleinman refers to as the Ministry of Happiness. They are all citizen-facing departments whose budgets unfortunately are often the first to get cut during the budgeting process. How will you balance the needs of these important city services, particularly compared to other needs like public safety and infrastructure? We'll begin with Ms. Yammaru.
I love this question. Um, I think that, um, libraries, parks, trails are, are, you know, Ministry of Happiness because they keep us happy, but they also keep us healthy. They keep our city, um, running. I relied on, you know, libraries are not just a place where you can go read. The libraries are where you have access to Wi-Fi. running. I relied on, you know, libraries are not just a place where you can go read. The libraries are where you have access to Wi-Fi. So it's really important that for for those of us also renters, right? You can have outdoor spaces and parks and trails. So I think it's really, really important to keep these services fully funded. I think it's really important to make them accessible and available to Dallas sites across our city. And I think that we also don't recognize that these things are part of what make our community safer too. Whenever you have areas that are are full of libraries or for parks and trails, that's where you see that there are less crime. That's because people are happier. People have a space to be and to be in community. So this is a public safety issue. This is a public health issue. And we should be treating these these services as the necessary and life-saving services as they are. So big fan of our parks and trails and libraries, and I think we should fund them fully and make them accessible.
Thank you, Ms. Yamru. Mr. Warnock.
Oh, sorry. Love the parks, love what we've done, especially the North Haven Trail. I I think there's nothing that I love more than going outside and especially at the beginning of the the COVID shutdowns. Riding my bikes with my kids in between classes and in the middle of the day. I mean, that is something that will last with us forever. There are the arts also. The arts are so important. I have grown up as an actor, a writer, a producer, filmmaker. I've been involved in the arts. My children are in the Texas Ballet Theater, Jazz Dance Ballet and the J C C, the musicals. And something that people don't realize is that we spend 0.00067% on the arts, okay? This is one of our biggest returns on investment that the city gets. And we need to focus on it. And I don't just mean the symphony ballet and opera and everything like that. I'm I'm talking about there's some great artists, live venues that we could really take advantage of and get a return on investment, not just for our soul, which which is what the arts does, but also for our pocketbook. And it's been proven.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. Ms. Evans.
Hi, Ministry of Happiness. I agree. I love our our facilities, our libraries, our parks, our trails, but first comes public safety because you can't be on those trails if you're worried about someone attacking you. So public safety, people on the street, totally. The more people you have on the street, the less crime there is because there's people around. So that's one way to stop it. Lighting, which is again, infrastructure. Yes, our North Haven Trail is like Main Street and was Main Street during the pandemic. It was a lifesaver to many and people buy here because of that, by the way. Bikeability, you know, my husband bicycles bicycles to Presbyterian from our house. I mean, it's amazing to have the bikeability that we do. So all that's important and we can do it if we don't put shiny objects first in our budget. We look at our budget, we cut out the fat, we cut out the unnecessary. And it may mean even cutting some personnel, sorry to say, you know, down at City Hall, but I would put, you know, our funds, we have to have funding for this because it's very important. It's what brings people to our city. It's what brings people to live here. I totally agree with Barry on the arts. And also, do you know our library budget is very low compared to other cities? And I'm a huge library person. I used to spend a lot of time in the library too when I was a little kid. And but, you know, we do need to rethink libraries a little bit in terms of where we are now in the internet age because there's, you know, books on iPads and things. But thank you. Yes, very important.
Thank you, Ms. Evans and Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. One of my strengths on the planning commission was the ability to see the long game and the bigger picture. And so from the perspective of all those quality of life components of the budget, those are things that actually not only enhance our lives through as public safety and through mental health, but they also generate income. If you look at the land values around Clyde Warren Park, you can see that the corporate property tax rate greatly increases wherever there are quality of life places that are thriving. And so it's actually a good investment on the part of the city. So I think the challenge for city council will be, do we see those areas, that Ministry of Happiness, as an investment or strictly as a cost? And I think and I am the believer that it is an investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. All right, with about five minutes left, we're going to do a quick lightning round. So you have 10 seconds to answer. So don't think too hard. Just come shout out what your first thinking. We're going to start with Ms. Yamru. What is your favorite restaurant in District 11?
Favorite restaurant is Chris and John. It's a Vietnamese-Mexican fusion restaurant and it's amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock.
Oh, favorite restaurant? Well, it has to be a kosher one. So it could be a Darit. Could I think that's it?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Hi, I'm of course I can't think of the name of them now, but there's a Thai restaurant that is at LBJ in Preston that we're obsessed with. Taste of Thai, now maybe Thai some. And then there's also Mang Yama, which is an Italian restaurant that I'm obsessed with because I love Italian food. There's quite a few I love, actually. Thank you.
I think one of our attendees helped you out, Tippy Ties.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans and Ms. Schultz, your favorite restaurant in the district.
I'm going with Cindy's because Anbo, the owner, represents the very best of our country. So if you haven't read her story, look her up.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Okay, Mr. Warnock, you're up. What is your favorite park in District 11?
Churchill Park. It's right down the street from me. I can go there all the time. And boy, why did you have to do that question on the on the restaurants? Cindy's and An and
Great restaurants.
They're all great restaurants. But yeah, Churchill Park, it's it's in my hood.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. Ms. Evans, your favorite park?
Actually, I love the North Haven Trail. I love Churchill Churchill Park, but I did want to get back to Cindy's because my daughter and granddaughter eat there every Sunday. Also, let me mention Cooper Clinic. We're members. I know it's private, but Cooper is a really wonderful asset in Dallas that I think could be utilized a little bit more. I love Cooper and it's it's kind of where I go hang out, my happy place.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz, your favorite park?
Thank you. I'm going with Potential and Possibility, which is the new park at Valley View.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz and Ms. Yamru.
I'm gonna go, I feel like it's a tie between Arapaho Park, which is the cutest park in all of Dallas and Brett's Park.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Yamru. Okay, there has been some discussion at the state legislature about moving municipal elections to November to coincide with state and federal ones. Beginning with Ms. Evans, do you think municipal elections should be moved to November or should stay in May?
You know, I'm I'm really very torn on this. I don't think they should be moved. However, I really would love love it if more people voted. I think the problem is if you move it to the municipal elections, that the municipal, if you move it to November, municipal elections will be drowned out by national elections. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. I'm a hard no on that one. I've struggled to protect the nonpartisan nature of these elections, which I think is essential to maintaining our neighborhoods. Moving it to November would force partisan overlay to the races. So no.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Yamru.
I think increased participation participation in our election is always a good thing. So I'm a big fan of moving them to November. And if we want to protect them as nonpartisan, moving them to November in an off year is also a great idea because people will be able to know that there's an election happening. So yes, strong yes.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Warnock.
I agree with Ozana on this. I think that the voter turnout is extremely, it's embarrassingly low. And as a result, sometimes we see what's happening to cities all across the country where it ends up we we don't have the leadership we need. And if we need to stand out in the national, you think a national election is going to drown out the municipal, then maybe you're not the leader. I think we need more leaders and we need a, I would move it to November, just like Ozana. We need more, I'm sorry, more participation and that's the way to get it out.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. Okay, last question of the day with Friends of Dallas Public Libraries as a sponsor. Do you have a library card and what is your favorite library branch? Ms. Schultz, you're first.
Yes, I have a library card. Brett's Park is my favorite, but mostly I use Uber Drive and Libby these days.
Thank you, Ms. Yamru.
Yes, I do. And Brett's is also my favorite one.
All righty, Mr. Warnock.
I grew up going to Preston Royal Library and it's there's some nostalgia there. It's actually in District 13. So I would have to say that Brett's Park would be my my second favorite, but I do like to take my kids to Preston Royal simply because it's the nostalgia, just just being there.
Thank you and Ms. Evans.
Yes, I do. And Preston Royal only because it's closer to where we live and my granddaughters had so many wonderful programs there that I've been able to sometimes pick her up from. And that's where I took my children and it's a fabulous, I love the quaintness of it. It kind of takes me back to my childhood. So I love it. But I love Brett's Park too. Thank you. The Brett's Library is beautiful.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our candidates. We appreciate your time. Thank you to all of you at home or at work for participating and watching. And I'm sure some of the candidates will let you know if you'd like to follow up with any questions to their offices to know exactly where they stand on a particular issue that may be close to you. And I'd like to thank our sponsors, the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce, the Dallas Breakfast Group, the League of Women Voters, the Friends of Dallas Public Library and Faith Commons. I believe this will be, this was recorded and will be posted on YouTube. So you are welcome to share it with those you, your neighbors. And I believe this was also one of the most highly attended candidate forums. So kudos to all of you, District 11 voters. And don't forget, early voting begins on Monday and the election is May 1st. Thank you all.